Thank you, and welcome to the Wednesday, June 28, 2023, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. Call this meeting to order. And we'll start with a roll call. Commissioner Woodyear?
Present.
Commissioner Aparna?
Present.
Commissioner Van Nyman?
Present.
Commissioner Sheffron?
Present.
Commissioner Nueva Camina?
Present.
And I am Chair Sherri Nichols. Commissioner Weston is under the weather tonight. Also joining us tonight are extending their workday our staff members Seraphie Allen, Kathy Beam, Becky Frye, and Mary LaRue. Look for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
So moved.
Before we do that, my fault, if I could ask you to withdraw that motion. I have a request to change the agenda slightly tonight and to move item eight, the natural environment element, ahead of item seven, the centers element. So with that change to the agenda, I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the motion, and the agenda is approved. This is the point in the meeting in which we listen to public comment on any item that is not subject of a public hearing, and we have three people who have signed up to speak to us tonight. When you come up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have approximately three minutes to share with us and whatever your heart desires. David Morton, you want to come address us first?
Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm David Morton, 19934. Shall I wait for the microphone?
Yeah, that's Chris.
Sarah Switch. Oh, it sounds like it's on now. Okay. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm David Morton, 19934 Northeast Union Hill Road, Redmond, 98053. It's good to hear that Redmond is evaluating the addition of a new climate element to its comp plan. Redmond has already taken some of the following 10 key steps. First, Redmond should establish climate-related goals such as reducing greenhouse gas emissions, promoting renewable energy, and building climate resilience. Second, a thorough assessment of Redmond's existing vulnerabilities and available resources should follow, considering factors like temperature changes, sea level rise, extreme weather events, water resources, air quality, and ecosystem health. Third, engaging stakeholders and the public is essential to gather input and ensure community involvement. Public meetings, workshops, surveys, and online platforms can be used to collect feedback, suggestions, and concerns. Fourth, this feedback will inform the development of policies and strategies to address climate change challenges. These measures could include land use planning, transportation improvements, energy efficiency initiatives, waste management strategies, and natural resource protection. Fifth, both mitigation and adaptation measures should be integrated into the climate element. Mitigation focuses on reducing greenhouse gas emissions, while adaptation aims to build resilience to climate impacts. Examples of mitigation measures include promoting renewable energy, improving energy efficiency, and encouraging sustainable transportation options. Adaptation measures may involve enhancing infrastructure resilience, protecting natural areas, and implementing strategies to cope with changing temperatures and precipitation patterns. Sixth, clear targets, benchmarks, and timelines should be established to measure progress and ensure accountability. Seventh, collaboration with relevant agencies and departments is crucial, as coordination with planning, public works, environmental, transportation, and community development entities can enhance the effectiveness of the climate element. Eighth, regular review and updates are necessary to reflect changing circumstances and evolving best practices. Ninth, legal and technical expertise should be sought to ensure compliance with regulations and to benefit from the insights of professionals experienced in climate planning and sustainability. And finally, monitoring and reporting progress will allow the city to track the implementation of policies and strategies and assess the overall effectiveness of the climate element. Redmond can adapt this process to the specific characteristics and needs of the city. By following these steps and involving the community, Redmond can successfully include a climate change and resiliency element in its comprehensive plan, contributing to the fight against climate change and building a more sustainable and resilient future. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnie Tomac.
I'm Arnie Tomac, 18119 Northeast 30th Street in Redmond, 98052. I come to talk to you tonight about complete neighborhoods. I know you, in fact, I went to the planning meeting last week because I was very curious, and I attended your meeting last night with the city council. I was very curious because while I was in the council for many years, that's the last thing you suggest. You suggest that, and you're in trouble. In fact, when you ran for council, you had to promise not to impact the neighborhoods. And I think it's changed. That's why I came to the meeting. I think new attitudes are in Redmond, and I'd like to see how this turns out. But I wanted to share with you, my wife and I grew up in complete neighborhoods where we were young. My wife grew up in the Midwest, and within two blocks of where she lived, there was four convenience stores. She could walk down, and they each had different products. And she could walk down there and get groceries for the family or get her own individual items. So it was very convenient, and her dad walked to work. It was a 10-minute walk to work. I grew up in Renton, and I remember going to Johnson's Grocery Store. It was in a residential neighborhood with a grocery store and a butcher shop downstairs, and the family lived above the grocery store. And I grew up on Renton Hill, just above where 405 is now, and I could walk, you know, two or three blocks to the convenience stores. Of course, in the 1950s and 60s, guess what? Freeway systems started to be built, well, in Redmond, and one stop lane. So, and then what happened in that timeframe, I think you all realize, Bellevue started building, really building, in fact, they, I think, added almost 60,000 people in 10 years. But they built their neighborhoods without sidewalks because no one needed to walk or ride. Cars were king. You just had to get in your car and go someplace. So they missed out, and they're going back now and obviously rebuilding those sidewalks. On the way home from the planning meeting, my wife and I started talking about where in our neighborhood we could see something like that being built. We live in the viewpoint area, and we identified two areas. One was at Northeast 40th and Lake Somamish Road because it's right across the street from the apartments. And you can see people from the apartments walking over there, getting convenient things and going home. The other place was at the corner of Northeast 36th and Lake Somamish, right across from Edgewood Park. That's another place that, you know, you could put something like that, and I think it would be very valuable. I remember last night, there was discussion about the concern about people driving to those convenient centers in the neighborhoods, and that's been the stumbling block for years because everyone felt there's going to be traffic jams, people parking to the wrong places, you know, congestion that people did not want to see in their neighborhoods. And that is a concern. I think you have to address that, and it'll be interesting to see what innovative ideas you come up with that, you know, address those items. But I want you to do one thing. I want to encourage you to go to the little store. I don't know if you've been there. The little store is on West Lake Somamish, just north of Vasa Park. It's been there for 60 years. I don't know, I see some of you have been there. It's a convenience store, people live on the property, and I've never seen more than four cars there. They only have like four or five parking stalls, and I've never seen it congested with cars. So it might be something you could talk to Bellevue about, or even the owners, and find out how that works in their residential areas, pretty residential. So I encourage you to go down there and evaluate that. I guess one of the last comments I want to make is during the pandemic, food trucks were very popular in the neighborhoods. And so I think that's something you might want to take a serious look at, is how do you accommodate that in neighborhoods? And that'd be another wave of combining conveniences, maybe some of those food trucks that have other things for people, who knows? Anyway, those are the things that I wanted to bring to your attention, and I want to thank you for looking at this, and I'll be very interested to see what you recommend to the council. And I'm going to the council next Wednesday, well, actually, it's Wednesday, and give the same talk. So, okay, thank you very much for hearing me.
Thanks, Arnie. Brian Baker.
Hattie, some of you know me, not everybody has, but I show up every now and then. Thank you for the comments on the sidewalks, because that's one of my biggest issues. And thank you all for considering all of this, especially with accessibility in mind. Down Jacques, I don't know if you've ever met my dog Jacques, but he's not supposed to be standing right now. But one of the things that you brought to mind is not only missing sidewalks, but inadequate sidewalks in high-volume areas. And the one that's obvious to me is 166 Avenue because it's the only way on and off the hill. And it's a single wide pedestrian sidewalk, and anytime I'm on it, which is where I live, so I'm on it all the time, I'm chasing people into the street, or I ride the street myself, Jacques, that's it. Anyway, I'll get on to my point. I just wanted to emphasize a few things because they're very, very important to me, and I don't want them to be overlooked as not important enough. And one of the things I saw in your notes was that often you guys wait for new development to solve a problem, and two things happen. The problems don't, we have a patchwork system, and you might have nine tenths of a street in great shape, but that one tenth is a problem because I can't use it, so therefore I can't use anything. Or they put in infrastructure poorly, and there's a lot of examples where they don't put in, for instance, wide enough sidewalks where I can pass myself. At a very minimum, there needs to be, and this is probably your job, is to set new minimum standards where I can pass myself anywhere downtown, and it's already too late in a lot of new construction. They're narrower than two of me, which means even a stroller is going to have to find a way off the sidewalk if I'm coming by because it's not an option I have. So when you do new development, make sure they do it right. Make sure the standards are up, and curb cuts are a big part of that, and I know we've had a lot of conversations. I really appreciate your notes on that. Parking's a big one for me. I have, I know you can't see it from here, it's right out here, eight-and-a-half-foot-tall van. Nobody thought about how I'm going to fit in the garage in all of downtown, and when people tell me there's plenty of parking, try one of the garages. It's not an option, not even at Redmond Town Center. When I go to Redmond Town Center, I've worked it out with them to use their loading zone, which can be in their way, but that's all I've got. If their surface lots are full, because I also have to have the van-accessible space on the side to unload. And I've told a few people this, also when you're thinking of new parking, public parks or whatever, even down here, because they haven't done it in City Hall yet. If you stripe in a certain way, and I can write this out on paper and show you, you can make everything van-accessible, meaning that I can use it, and not even take up or use up more parking lot, and still have the same amount of parking spaces. It is a striping way. The only trick is sometimes you can't retro it because you have to have the curb cut to get up on the sidewalk. But when you do something new, it's the time to put everything in as van-accessible. The only other thing I wanted to really mention, because that's about it, is you've got a great trail network. It's one of the only, not the only thing, it's one of the best things about Redmond. But very often, they're not connected for a wheelchair user. The connector trail, great trail through downtown, right at Redmond Way, there's stairs, but there's no ramp. And the workaround is huge in either direction. If I wanted to, say, go to the Kentucky Fried Chicken, which is right below the bridge, I have to go around several blocks worth, about a quarter of a mile to get there. That's not the only example, it's just a example. Some of them, the trail passes right by McDonald's, but they never put in a connection. Just something to think about because the trails are useful, but they should be useful for everybody. That's it for now. I don't disappear, you'll hear from me again.
Good boys, huh?
Perfect segue into our next item, which is the Light Rail Disability Access Project briefing. Mary LaRue.
And I just want to introduce Mary to you. I don't believe she's spoken to the planning commission before. So Mary joined our team as a summer intern in long-range planning, and we hired her on because we loved her so much. And she has been working on our light rail accessibility project as a part of the work from Redmond 2050, also with the TNP update, and as a part of getting her double masters in public health and planning. And so she's here tonight to share the findings of her project.
All right. Thank you so much. I did have the chance to present this a few months ago when it was in its early stages, so we'll get to kind of see where it ended up. As a quick reminder, for those who may not be familiar with the project, our goal was to, as Redmond is growing and gaining light rail access, figure out what we, as a city, can be considering in the areas surrounding the light rail stations that would influence their use for people with different abilities and make them more universally accessible. And so we were specifically looking at the public realm within half a mile of the light rail stations. That includes things like streets, sidewalks, lighting, seating, crosswalks, anything that influences how people are able to access the light rail stations. We did this through some interviews with residents, with local organizations. We held a focus group, and we did a few walk and roll audits with different community members who were willing to take us out and kind of walk us through what it is like for them to navigate these areas, and in some instances, not be able to navigate these We got a lot of feedback from the group, and we've broken it into two kinds of categories. The first is things that we chose to focus on with this project, and the others are important pieces of feedback that we are kind of holding for future projects just due to the timeframe we had. So this first bit here of feedback that we got is that there's a lot of interest in wayfinding efforts, specifically in signs, but as well in other methods like sidewalk braille, ADA signals, distance markers. There's also a lot of concern from community members about accessibility for larger mobility devices. Many standards are meant for smaller manually pushed wheelchairs and do not necessarily accommodate larger mobility devices that are frequently used. We have some images on this slide of community members who have specifically struggled because the mobility devices they use take up more space and don't fit in the areas that are provided. And then one of the largest concerns that we've heard from community members has been sidewalk conditions and curb ramps and the ability of those to completely cut off access to different areas. The other feedback that we are taking seriously but are kind of holding for future projects and future plans is more specifically in the wayfinding, the sidewalk braille, and the color coding of different areas. Many people shared with us that individuals who can't read English, individuals who may have lower eyesight, or individuals who may not be able to kind of read, they're able to look at color coding in a lot of different places, and so implementing that into a wayfinding system can be helpful. Sidewalk braille is already utilized within the stations, and so continuing it outside of the station into the neighborhoods is something that we've heard can be useful. Another piece of information we got is the lack of drop-off and pickup spaces at transit centers and stops or near them in addition to parking can be difficult as people like to use transit but struggle to find ways to kind of make it to that last mile home if they're not able to use the crosswalks or the sidewalks or whatever else, or in instances where it's pouring rain and people don't necessarily want to be walking home. We've also heard that longer crosswalk signals and increased auditory signals throughout the city would benefit those who may be slower as they're crossing the street or need better indication of when it is safe to cross. And the last piece is that construction barriers are frequently changing throughout the city as the city's undergoing a lot of growth, and so that means that a route that is accessible one day may all of a sudden not be accessible the next. So figuring out communication and workarounds for that to ensure that our growth in the city isn't causing problems for people as they get around. Going back to some of the feedback that we looked into, the biggest piece of feedback that we got is that the curb ramps that we have are not currently working. So Redmond is meeting ADA standards with their current curb ramps, and the screen here shows the design guide that we follow for those curb ramps. There are two different types. The top one is the single curb ramp layout, and the bottom is the dual curb ramp layout. Both of these ramps have a problem with a narrow width. It is difficult to use on the larger devices, and it also creates a bottleneck. Most people, regardless of whether they are walking, rolling, using a device or not, tend to follow that ramp into the street, and so it creates a funnel, and if everybody is using it, people using mobility devices are often left waiting in the street until it clears out and they can get up back onto the sidewalk. When you go down to, or when you look at that upper one, you also can see that the angle of the ramp kind of goes at a straight angle out into the intersection rather than into the striping, and they build in this little curved turn zone there in the triangle, but the larger mobility devices aren't able to make that turn radius. And so we have heard from multiple community members that they have been scared, and they have actually scared drivers with how close they've gotten to them just to be able to turn from the ramp back into the striping where pedestrians are supposed to be. That problem is solved in the dual curb ramp layout where it spits you directly into the striping, but the narrowness of the curb and kind of the bottleneck is still an issue in that. Now, in Redmond, we do have some solutions to this. We have something that's called a blended transition. These are currently located in the downtown area on Cleveland Street as well as in the Overlake area on Turing Street. A blended transition brings the entire corner of the sidewalk down to street grade, and so it ends up wider than that minimum ADA ramp and creates a more open space for people to use. We heard from quite a few residents that these types of corners would be preferred regardless. One particular said that when her daughter was young and was in that very independent toddler stage combined with her other child in a wheelchair, being able to have a sidewalk like this would have made traveling around a lot easier for them because it provides space, it avoids the bottleneck, it avoids the kind of turn radius issues. So that is the solution that we have. It is not the easiest to implement, so what we have done for now is we have written a recommendation memo to the public works and planning directors to look into what standards would need to change, what public works would need to do to figure out the efficacy of these, the safety of these, kind of how we could do that. So looking into an increased use of the blended transition is the recommendation we're making, as well as updating the standards to not allow the single ramp curb layout, except in specific instances where it's absolutely necessary. So that at the very minimum, we can have that dual curb ramp layout that kind of avoids the proximity to traffic. We are also recommending that projects that include elements such as the blended transition curbs or the updated dual curb ramp layouts are prioritized in different project schedules. So as we are kind of going about picking what projects the city is funding and going about, we're emphasizing projects that have universal design as part of their design. Then in regards to wayfinding needs, this study was able to partner with the Routes to Rails project that was happening. The Routes to Rails project kind of hauled the whole city on different things that could benefit people's access to light rail, and then community members voted on a pilot project. They voted on a wayfinding pilot project on the Heron Rookery Trail just by downtown. And so based on the feedback that we got from this study, we added the handicap signal to the sign trails that people would know if they were able to access the trail before they kind of got all the way to it. We also updated the signs to list the distance in mileage versus in walking minutes, as the feedback we got from community members is that people who use mobility devices don't have the same walking time, and so knowing distance and mileage is much more helpful to them. And so these signs have been up for about three weeks now with some open feedback, and the Routes to Rails team will be continuing to kind of take that feedback and see what can be done and use that in the future once the pilot project is done. So in the future, we are recommending as well that the city kind of take that and integrate other methods such as the braille, color coding, as we had talked about. This sign does show both trail systems and destinations with the future downtown Redmond Light Rail Station being on it. So figuring out what types of things community members would like to see on wayfinding signs is kind of what their goal was. The information that we've gotten in this study is going to be taken forward. It's going into that recommendation memo that will go to the departments. It is also going to be used in the Redmond 2050 comprehensive plan updates as well as the transportation master plan updates. So the feedback that we've gotten, we weren't able to do everything in the timeframe that our study had, but it has been recorded and will continue to be used throughout these Thank you.
I just have a comment, looking at the curb cuts and the more, I forget what it was called, but the broader.
The blended transitions.
Blended transition. I think that's a case where we've talked about how universal design is better for everyone. I know I have a bad ankle, and normally it's not a big deal. I can walk normally, but any unevenness in the sidewalk, my ankle is prone to just rolling. And so, you know, it's not just people on wheelchairs that have issues with those curb cuts. People who have some sort of instability, whether it's obvious or not, the curb cuts create problems, right? You know, it can be a visual problem, you have visual, you can't see. And I know when I was recovering from my ACL surgery, stepping off curbs at first, the first couple of months was a little challenging. I had to stop and think, okay, I'm going to step off with this leg, not the one that was recovering from surgery. And I wasn't on crutches or anything, but it was just that knee was still a little unstable. And so when you have the blended curb cut, all that goes away. Commissioner Aparna.
This was very interesting, and I think adding to the comments that we've heard. I think the notion of continuity, like a seamless transition, right? I mean, that blended thing is the first seamless transition, but we have to think in terms of that. It's a mindset thing. It's not checkmark, checkmark. There has to be, and so I'm really liking how you're thinking about this, and I'm hoping that it's not just for the TOD areas, you know? And over time, we should be thinking about it as seamless transition. So, thank you.
Commissioner Nueva Camina.
Mary, thank you so much for that presentation. I just, it was wonderful and very informative. Question that I had, and this is more of a curiosity, because we do have issue with safety for our pedestrians, and it's more of driver's awareness and lack thereof sometimes, especially downtown. Have we started to see any data come back yet on the blended transitions with cars rolling up onto it? Because of course, that brake does create a barrier, and then the driver knows, you know, like, hey, I'm going to lose a tire. So I know that when it comes to roundabouts, there's an increase of people when there isn't a curb brake of them running up on it. Have we seen any data come back on blended transitions around this?
I don't know if we have or not, but that's part of the recommendation to the planning and public works director as they look into that, is to look at these places in the city that they have been implemented and look at kind of what has changed. Are they seeing things like that? Is there safety concerns involved? Using those almost as a pilot to kind of move forward.
Yeah, I'll add that when we talked to public works, that was one of the reasons why they said that these types of corners won't work everywhere. But there are places where they make perfect sense, where we have a lot of pedestrian traffic, the car traffic is slower. So what we're looking at, in your memo, you'll see that there's some very specific locations where the recommendation is saying, in these places, please try to find a way to prioritize those, and then look at how we can mitigate, you know, those types of concerns. And it could be something as simple as making sure that there's a different color on that corner, you know, like there are other things that we can do to help enhance safety and awareness of that smooth surface. that smooth surface, don't go there car. So yeah, that is a part of the conversation that we're looking at. And there are definitely places where it does make sense to move forward with this, but there might be places where it doesn't. Or we come up with a slightly different design, right? So that one design that we have in place today, if we modify it a little bit, might work in other places, right? So that is part of the recommendation.
It would seem too that putting braille along the edge would give that tactile feedback to the driver that, oh, I'm not supposed to be there.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner.
I love this topic. I love this topic because it enfranchises everyone in the community, whether you're of different abilities or whether you're moving a stroller or suitcases. So it is a benefit for everyone in our community and that's inclusiveness all around. In instances where this universal curb does not, is not feasible, is there a plan to widen the curbs in other areas, widen the curbs?
We haven't made any recommendations beyond this at this time, but what we are trying to do as a broader conversation about equity in our community is taking a look at our design standards in general. And I wanted to add on at the end, Mary had said some next steps. There's a few other next steps that are happening. Like we are currently going into a review of our design standards just as a process in our Public Works Department. And we're looking at ways that we can bring that universal design awareness just into that process in general, right? And we're talking about different things, like there's a couple of other curb cut designs that are used that are problematic as well. So we're actually bringing forward a couple of things. So what she's highlighting for you today is really just the tip of the iceberg and we're trying to do a much broader and much deeper conversation as a part of the city's moving from suburban to urban. And as we make that transition, we're updating all of our standards, right? All of them. Can we bring universal design into the conversation from the beginning as we start to update those standards so that when we update them, universal design is just integrated into that update?
This is a component of a holistic view that extends universal accessibility across the board then?
Yeah, and it's probably something that will go on for years, right? Because it's going to take many steps forward. But what Mary's project was is a continuation of our conversation and she'd had a six-month study, right? Just trying to look at the immediate recommendations. Part of our commitment in this project is nothing about us without us, right? Getting to understand what the community is saying their biggest concerns are. This is just one way that we were going out to reach out. Hey, what are the biggest concerns to you right now? And then we could fold into as a first step, right?
And so these first steps are prioritized, or at least it gives a sense of the things that are going to have the biggest impact. I love this idea, so I don't want to stray from that. But I also want, I think it's also important to make sure that the things that are going to have the biggest impact is also part of that holistic plan and is prioritized because obviously we don't want our citizens to wait 10 years for.
Correct.
The ability to navigate.
There are many, many, many other projects that are undergoing and that will be started soon that will be integrating everything from Mary's study into.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
So I can't recall if you've covered this before because I know we had a briefing at a study session. And as Commissioner Parna mentioned, a lot of these issues that you're touching on apply to the city as a whole. They're perhaps more concentrated around the transit areas. The issue of impediments in the sidewalk, specifically Lime scooters.
That, she asked about Lime scooters, the micro mobility. That is something that I have heard in other places as an issue, but was not specifically brought up in this study. More of the issues of things in the sidewalks that we heard about were construction barriers. So it's possible that has changed since then, but that was not a report I got during the feedback.
Because I know Brian has mentioned it before, that you've encountered scooters.
Such a bad problem. Let's give it up.
See, that's why you didn't get it because he stopped complaining.
The problem with them is they'll show up in miscellaneous places. You may have gone a quarter of a mile down the sidewalk with no way to get up.
So, you know, and if it may, so it's not going to show up in this particular issue, report, but it's a matter of education for people and trying to get the word out to teach people where those scooters should and shouldn't go.
Also holding the companies, the rental company responsible.
So in the 12-hour timeframe maybe, but in the 30-minute timeframe, I know, whatever, like, I don't know.
We can, that can be set. I mean, if.
But, you know, they're going to come and pick them up at some point.
Eventually.
But you can't, you know, you still have to educate the user of, that they shouldn't be leaving it smack dab in the middle of the sidewalk. Okay, this might be common sense to some people.
My point is that if you put the, if you, if you make the company renting them more accountable, they will start.
Solutions.
Educating their users by, you know, having it set off an alarm when they just leave them. You didn't park it.
I know some companies make you take a photo of where you leave it and if you've left it in an inappropriate location, they fine your account. So, and it is because cities have come back and forced, so. That's something that the transportation team is working on the Lime contract and will be able to have more information, it looks like.
Okay. Sarafi wants to add something here.
Thanks. I just want to let you know, we actually have just done a report about micro mobility units in the right of way. And you'll be pleased to hear that we've been having a big decrease in terms of the queue alerts. And for the aforementioned person before, we set up an ability for him to directly report to Lime and they've been really responsive. So if you are interested, we could forward you that report when it's ready so you can see how responsive the company has been. And so our team's working on that.
I don't report to them anymore. Until you're done.
Anyway, my point is that it's not necessarily our job to educate the users. We can instead hold the company that's making money off of them responsible. Any more? Commissioner Sheffron.
Thank you. Very good and very thorough report, really appreciate it. And I think there's a lot of learning opportunity in the information. So I don't know if this is relevant or not, but I am curious to know if the city has undergone kind of an existing deficiencies inventory of some sort, just as Brian had brought up, that might be parallel to the recommendations that will be going to go back to Public Works and the Planning Director.
I know that that's part of the Transportation Master Plan coming up, is they're planning on doing a full review of the facilities that they have, the issues they have and kind of where things are problematic. I can't remember the last time that one of those was done though.
About two years ago, they studied curb cuts.
About two years ago?
Four thousand of them needed to be fixed or just put in period.
So, thank you. So the study is there. So do we know, I mean, we've got sort of the planning effort and policy-driven efforts, but I'm curious to know if Capitol Facilities is attempting to address some of the deficiencies and not reliant necessarily on exactions through new development?
I do know that they are responding to public comments. If somebody reports an issue, they do respond to the issue. But what we can do is we can make a note and have our transportation folks come in and provide an update on that process.
Thank you.
We'll also be getting later this year or beginning of next year, the transportation element of the comp plan. So, and the Transportation Master Plan.
There's a lot coming related to transportation this year.
Yeah. So, put a pin in that.
We can definitely convey it to the staff looking on that. If that's of interest.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more for Mary?
Great.
Thank you, Mary. Nice presentation. With that, we will move on to our study session on Redmond 2050, the Parks Arts Recreation, Culture and Conservation Element and the Park Functional Plan.
So Glenn is not here for this evening, but Caroline Chapman is joining us.
Yes, hello. Thank you and good to see you all again. Thank you for letting me attend remotely this evening. So we are back tonight and hoping to get your recommendation that will allow the park plan to go forward for review and approval at the City Council. So at our last study session, we had shared with this commission really how the park plan is meeting the requirements of the Growth Management Act. We also spent some time talking about how it fits within the framework of the Comprehensive Plan Update. And as a staff, we've really been working closely with the long-range team to have these two documents, both the park element of the Redmond 2050 Comprehensive Plan and our department's functional plan, really support and enhance one another. So you might recall that last time Glenn mentioned we were cutting the number of policies in the park element of the Comprehensive Plan from something like 65 policies down to around 17 or so. And this was really to reduce duplication and keep the policies in the Comprehensive Plan at a higher level since it is a 20-year plan. And then taking those pieces that weren't quite fitting and putting them into our functional plan. And so similarly, the park plan is looking at keeping our actions and recommendations at an appropriate level for that six-year functional plan. So this will really guide the work of our department, but it's not necessarily going to include really specific planning details, maybe like a design elements at a specific park or recommended amenities or services at specific locations. So those types of things really become more operational decisions that become part of a staff work plan when we are picking up the recommendation out of the park plan and then moving it forward to see how that could work or what it would look like. So there were some questions that were asked by the commission at our last meeting and in the Issues Matrix that was sent in your attack or in your packet, we've included some details on how or if those topics are being addressed in the current public-facing draft of the park plan that we have open for public comment. One change that will be made is adding the Redmond Bike Park to the inventory and list of parks in Chapter 3, so thank you very much for raising that, that it slipped through the cracks on this one. So if you feel comfortable moving to a vote this evening and making a recommendation for council review, we should include a mention that the bike park will be added so that it's clear for the record. But there is a few other topics raised by the commission that are part of the current policies in Chapter 4 of the public-facing draft that we referenced. And it might not have that same level of detail or specificity that commission had asked for, but I do believe that the intent of the request is addressed if we are talking, if we give reference to a specific policy. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments from the Issues Matrix.
Anybody? Becky, can you bring up the Issues Matrix?
Sure.
So that we know who had what. I have, Commissioner Weston could not be with us tonight, but I have had discussion with her and she was satisfied with the answers to her issues on the Issues Matrix and is willing to close them. Commissioner Parna, are you willing to? Do you have a?
Thank you, Chair. So I understand that we have the park inventory listed there and we do see the existing playgrounds. I just, I am hoping that the capital projects in the future kind of give more recommendations towards the playgrounds because what I'm seeing is we are talking macro a lot, right? We've got, you know, basketball, tennis, dog parks, bigger, larger scales. But the playgrounds, which are these tiny little island pieces, is what I was concerned about, but if it's going to come up in the capital projects in the future, then we can close this topic. But I don't see that fully reflected, but I'm hoping it comes up in the details in the future. Would that be fair to say, Caroline?
Maybe I'm missing what the concern is. Your concern is that there are not enough play structures, playgrounds?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, and what we had heard through the public comment process around playgrounds specifically was the need for additional playgrounds, especially in our urban centers, and that has been listed as a capital project. We don't say where because we don't, haven't done that research yet to be able to analyze or provide a recommendation for what public space that would be. But we do very much see playgrounds as being a part of all of our neighborhood parks. I think we have 18 or 19 neighborhood parks and a new one coming online. And it is a key amenity within all of our parks.
Sounds good. Then we can close this. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next one is mine as well. So I think the food truck, you've answered the question, but for me it is more like, are there any barriers? If there are no barriers and they are welcomed into the parks, that's all I needed to know. But I, I just kind of wanted to know that there are no barriers as it stands right now. That was my concern.
There are no barriers. They are allowed in the parks with, they are receiving their appropriate permits and permissions. So yes.
So we can close that one as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Parna, I do also want to mention that that is one of the things that is being reviewed under the land use policy updates as well with the Complete Communities work that we're doing.
I'm good on the next one.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Weston has agreed that we can close the next one.
All of Commissioner Weston's, she said closed?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Oh, I'm sorry, number seven. Commissioner Parna, this was you. Yes, sorry, it doesn't have your name on it there.
No, I think, I think this is fine and I'm really glad somebody's looking into it because even today I had an arborist come home saying the extreme heat is causing beetle damage to a lot of the evergreens, which are natives. So we just kind of need to keep an eye on what is going to work in the changing climate. So I'm glad.
What's going to be native in the future.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
It's going to be a new native, let's put it that way. So thanks, Caroline. You can close this one.
Wonderful, yeah. No, that should be a really cool project and I can circle back with the planning team or the staff here if that's something you guys are interested in seeing the results of. It is out for RFP right now.
Yes, please. Thank you.
It'll be a while.
Okay. Are there any more questions about the park element and the park functional plan? Any more discussion about it? Are we ready to move to recommendation? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the plan recommended to City Council with the caveat of the Redmond Bike Park being added to the list.
Okay.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. And that is approved. So we recommend the park element and the park functional plan for council.
Wonderful. Well, thank you all so much and really appreciate your feedback throughout this process. Hopefully you will see your input on display, so much appreciated.
Thanks, Caroline. Now we'll move on to Redmond 2050, the Economic Vitality Element.
Becky, do you want to share or I can? I have it pulled up if you'd like.
Good. Thank you, Sarafi. Go ahead.
Okay, so as a quick reminder about the Economic Vitality Element, this element helps to complement what will later be our Economic Development Strategic Plan and our Tourism Plan. And, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about a couple of these items and so I'm hoping that we're able to have addressed the concerns that you all raised in the last couple of meetings and close this one. So for the first one, was there any questions around the business? Sorry, let me close my windows really quick. Lots of dogs. Lots of dogs. All right. Was there any questions around the, further questions around the business districts with EV fourteen?
I don't have any.
Okay, I'll go back to the latest thing. So just as a review, in case some of you weren't able to get to it, but we are working on developing definitions for small and local businesses as part of the Economic Development Strategic Plan and working on specific definitions and that there was a specific definition that's just town center zone as we worked on the changes with you all for that as well. But yeah, any other questions?
Yeah, I think we had closed it. We could close it again.
Okay, great.
Further information.
Okay, further, I've lived in this, there, the next two for smart cities. The final language that was placed, let me pull, would you like me to go to the final language? So y'all can see that one. Okay. Let's go. Oh, that's the natural environment one. Okay.
One more.
There we go. So EV twelve, you can see, so evaluate and implement community-wide innovations that enhance economic vitality while ensuring data privacy and security. So this, this last bit was an attempt to add in the data privacy and security.
I'm good with that. Aparna seems good with that. And I'm seeing, I'm seeing thumbs up and Commissioner Weston is good with that, she told me.
Excellent.
We can close that one.
Thank you. Okay, and then for the final two, these were kind of the just miscellaneous comments. I just wanted to add, there were some changes that were made to EV one, EV eighteen, nineteen, twenty-four for better clarity, in addition to adding in the suggestions. And then for the one Redmond public comment, we added in language in there or let them know that the comments they had added of quality of life was added into all the other ones.
Right. I think.
All right.
I think we can close those two.
Okay, any other questions for economic vitality? I noticed also it was a big topic of discussion from last night, especially the food trucks.
Yeah, everybody's in favor of food trucks, more food trucks. I'm not seeing any more, any more questions. One thing I forgot to do on the park thing that I should do, which is close the public hearing to written comment. And I'm going to close the economic vitality public hearing to written comment. Now.
All right.
Any discussion on the economic vitality element? Would anybody like to make a motion with a recommendation?
I move to approve the economic vitality element as presented.
I think we, we don't approve it, we recommend it.
Recommend, sorry, I approve to recommend it to City Council as presented.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And it passes. Thank you.
Hooray. Thank you, Philly, for being here.
Just want to keep everybody happy. We're not approving things. We're just recommending. We don't approve things. Okay, now we're going to go with our amended agenda to Revon 2050, the natural environment element, which we didn't get to last time.
Yep, and thank you for your willingness to switch it around. Kathy Beam has joined us for any specific questions, but I'll be presenting. Hold on one second. Okay. So, and just to double check, because I had missed the last pending question, you all didn't get to natural environment element at all, correct?
Not at all, yeah.
Okay, that's right, because it was capital facilities. Yep.
It was nine thirty and we were, we were done.
Yes. Well, we will do our best because you still have a full agenda to get through this one as well. So for the natural environment element, we are here in the phase. And things for us to think about are, do these draft policies support Redmond's vision and goals? And particularly thinking about our environmental and sustainability action plan? And do these drafts align with our Redmond 2050 themes as well? So state requirements, this is not required under the Growth Management Acts Act. The land use element has, addresses some of the critical land use areas and protection of groundwater. And then it helps us to align with policies around sustainability and environmental stewardship. It also aligns with our Shoreline Master Plan program. What's new in the proposed element? The climate change policies are moving to have a new climate change and resiliency element. This was just determined, it's not required yet by the state, but we are kind of anticipating that they might do that in the future. So we thought it would be helpful for us to jump on it now. The critical area policies will be reviewed as part of the critical access. There's some minor changes to the goals and then consolidation of the tree canopy policies. I'll also put that Kathy has been, which is why I asked her to join today, helped to write this original element about ten years ago. So what's next? We'll be looking over the actual elements and then you are reviewing tonight and we'll begin community outreach in the summer and fall.
Okay.
Any initial questions before I jump over?
All right, so questions, we'll start with Commissioner Aparna.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Seraphi. So a couple of questions and I've emailed, just for the record, I've emailed Glenn about more, many more questions and just to save time. Mainly I wanted to talk about the structural aspect of this. For me, when I talk about climate change or the actions associated with it, there are two components. One is, what are we doing to, to reduce climate change or reduce the?
Impact.
Reduce the impact of, not reduce the impact of climate change, but just turn the clock around, for the lack of better words. I'm just not getting into my head right now. But basically to prevent and reduce the climate change, there's one section. And then there's a resilience piece, which is the adaptation part and the mitigation part. In the long term, what are we thinking about, right? So the energy efficiency pieces and all of that should be part of the natural, in my mind, something that we should consider is put it in the main section, which is the natural element section, which we're discussing right now. The climate resiliency piece is a long-term kind of look because the energy efficiency thing is happening right now. It's also reflected in state code and so on. So a lot of my comments are related to that structure and I'm just leaving it out there for people to think about. And the other piece that is more specific is NE seven. We talk about water and it's got water conservation and waste and use and all of that. I would like water to stand out on its own. I think water deserves its own little space for us to kind of uber-focus on. I brought this up before, we can't club it with other environmental concerns. It's, it's going to be a significant problem otherwise. So those are the high-level ones. I put in all the comments in written form and Glenn should have it for the matrix. So, thank you.
Thank you. And sorry, Aparna, just to double check, are you saying that you don't think that it should be a separate element? The climate change and resiliency?
So the resiliency piece, I think, should have its own element. Or if you want it to be, then it's, what you do about climate change to tackle climate change as it stands right now. So it's like short term and long term, think that way. So whether we just change the name of climate change and resiliency element, it could be as simple as that, as find a different set of words to describe that section or whether we want to pull some out and keep it for the short term. So the short-term pieces should be highlighted.
So if I, if I could try to restate, it sounds like to me what you're saying is one set, one half is, what are we doing right now to slow down climate change?
Right.
And its impacts? And then what are we doing to mitigate the impacts of climate change?
Yes.
In the future?
So one is about the cause and one is about dealing with the cause and one is dealing with the effect of climate change, right? So if we kind of split that up, they're actually completely different actions. They are not the same set of actions.
Yeah.
Right? So, yeah.
Thank you for that clarity. That's helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I know Commissioner Weston said she had some notes that she, that she couldn't be here tonight. She was going to email. Other commissioners, do you have notes about the natural environment element? I had a note about NE one thirty-six, which is not changed, but it's about noise. And it says, "Provide noise reduction and mitigation measures to reduce the noise and visual impacts of freeways and arterials on residential areas. Ensure the Washington State Department of Transportation provides appropriate levels of noise suppression when expanding or improving state highways." I was under the impression, maybe mistaken, that a lot of the techniques that have been used to try to do this, don't, they don't reduce or mitigate noise, they just move noise. So when you put walls up along freeways to reduce the noise alongside the freeways, it doesn't, it just moves the noise further out. So I don't really understand what this policy accomplishes. I know this is the way things have been done, but I don't think it actually works, is my point.
Yeah, it's a fair point. Kathy, do you have any thoughts on that one from past discussions?
Yes. Hello, commissioners. The noise one, I think we probably want to do a little digging into because you're right, that's a policy that we've done. And as Commissioner Nichols says, sometimes it just deflects the noise, right? Because it, the noise hits the wall and then deflects up often. And it's not necessarily absorbing the noise, if that makes sense. There are techniques that we use in our, in the building code related to noise. If you're within, if, for instance, a new development is being built within a certain distance from arterials that generate a certain decibel level, that's addressed with the construction of those projects. But that's a little bit different and those nuances are more detailed in codes for us. But I think it's worth looking into or doing a little investigation into the noise walls because I, I don't, that's not my area of expertise, but the point is well-taken, that I think we can do some research into that to see if they actually do are helpful or if they're just moving the noise around to other people.
Yeah, noise is just a funny thing. It tends to go. Living in a place where you can sometimes, depending on the weather, hear concerts at Marymore. Are there any other things? So that's all we have for tonight. I know, like I say, Commissioner Weston said she had some that she would email and Commissioner Aparna has some more that she will email. Thanks and thanks for joining us, Kathy.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay.
Thank you all.
We're moving faster than I expected. I'd sort of planned on taking a break at this point. Do we want to take a break or do we want to just keep going? Okay, we'll keep going. Revon 2050 Centers Element Study Session. Becky?
So we have not talked about this as a commission for several months. We have a lot of new commissioners. So we provided some information in your packet on the old issues matrix. You can see the conversation that planning commissioners had and understand how we got to where we are today. All of those issue matrix items are closed. We will start a new issues matrix for the public hearing process. And then if you've got any items that you'd like to start, we'll go from scratch from here on out. For the sake of making it easy for you to review, I did not include the red lines, but in the packet for the public hearing, we will have a red line version. We had originally started a document that actually showed all of the little red lines, but we did so much moving and editing that at this point, just to make it easy for folks, I'm just going to strike whole sections and replace. It becomes way too complicated to look at all of the, there's too many things that were just changed. So what I will do is I will make sure, and you see in the policy review that we'll go through the day where it says minor edit or no change. So that actually really very clearly documents the ones that aren't changing from a policy perspective, but I'll add some little icons or something too, just to make it even more obvious. This is no change, minor change, edit, new, right? So that way it's just easier for you guys to go through and you can focus on the things that you can really need to zero in on and that go from there. There is a lot of new background text that we won't show tonight unless you really want to go into it, but I do want to talk about that really briefly. In the introduction to this chapter, we have included a lot of new information about the new centers designations, right? So we're going from urban centers, which was like regional conversation, to now the regional planning context has many different types of centers so that we can plan at different scales, right? So the introduction text for this chapter includes a lot of information about the metro center versus the urban center for the different types of countywide centers that were just got adopted. And there's a lot of different countywide centers. And then there's the local center concept as well. And so because that gets super confusing to everybody, even the staff, as the change was made, we made sure to just include all of that in the document itself. We also are adopting and is in the background text the regional definitions for Transit Oriented Development, or TOD, and Equitable TOD, or E TOD. Couple of minor word changes to match Redmond's language preferences. But basically, we're adopting what was done at the regional level and a couple of years ago that was accomplished through federal grants. So there was a whole conversation about transit-oriented development, how we could work about it in Puget Sound. They came up with those definitions and instead of coming up with something brand new, we're just adopting those TOD definitions and equitable TOD. So all of that is done in the background text. And we've talked about, just in general, the city's growth and how we're approaching centers, right? So what I do want to go through with you tonight is I'll pull up the policy document and we'll go through each of the policies. Again, because we have some newer planning commissioners who may not be familiar with this, we'll go ahead and go through each one and you're welcome. Again, we will start a new issues matrix if you'd like. I can start to add some things to that. If you want to talk in depth about something or skip over it, I'll just follow your lead at this time. Let me go ahead and open that policy document for you. Okay. So to help with identifying what changed from the previous version, this is draft three point O in your packet. The change from draft two point O, there is a little pencil symbol and it is shown in a red line format so that you can see, there's very few changes we actually made from draft two to three. And like I mentioned earlier, we did close out all your issues matrix items as well. Hopefully, we've got it right, but this is the opportunity through obviously the public hearing process, we can, if we need to. hearing process, we can, if we need to, make some additional adjustments. Okay. For those of you who may not be familiar with how Redmond's comp plan does, is we have a series of framework policies that set just the bigger visioning and direction. So the policies that are framework, or FW designation, are literally just those really, really big picture, this is the direction we're heading. And so we have a couple of different framework policies for urban centers. This first one is literally just some updates. What we did is, we took it from the Overlake policies, and said, this really should be an overarching, all centers framework policy. So it was housed under, so I've said, there's a lot of moving parts in the edits on this. This was a Overlake policy. It is now an every-center policy. And we just made sure that it referenced the Redmond 2050 themes. Minor updates only. Relocation and the themes. Any comments or questions on this framework policy? Okay, thank you. And then, framework two, again, because we are talking about all of the new centers designations, we wanted to acknowledge that. But we also wanted to acknowledge the fact that we're looking at all ages and abilities as we look at these different types of centers. So this is a new framework policy, and it just folds in the focus of Redmond 2050 on Okay. So again, that sets the stage for policies that apply to all of our centers. And then, as we start to go in, anything that is a policy that is designated UC will apply to all centers. For right now, with Phase 1, that is just downtown and Overlake, as we make the move with Phase 2, Marymore will fall under this. So as you review these policies, be aware of that, right now, it won't apply to Marymore, but as we adopt Marymore changes next year, Marymore will be under this chapter, and not as a separate neighborhood element piece. And then, Marymore will have to comply with these policies as well. Fortunately, there's a lot of overlap, so shouldn't be a big change, but just something to keep in mind. If it's designated UC, it will be for all three of those centers. And in the future, if we designate anything else. So this first one is actually in response to King County Countywide Planning Policy Update. It is a requirement that we focus housing and employment growth into our centers and our high-capacity transit station areas. So this is almost verbatim from the King County Countywide Planning Policies. The second policy is new, however, within each of the centers, we had a policy that talked about the numbers that we were planning for. So yes, this is a new policy, but it is, we're striking the growth-related policy out of Overlake and out of Marymore, and we're just putting the centers-related growth in one policy. This is a chart that reflects our preferred alternative. So this is pretty much the public unveiling of how this is going into the centers. We are presenting the preferred alternative to council next month, on July 18. And so, for those of you who are very interested in following that, in that packet, they will have a lot more information than what you see here. And the modeling on that is underway. So that is moving forward with these numbers. Just a reminder, these are estimates, projections, loose, you know, this is saying, this is the amount of growth that we were assigned, and this is how we're allocating it. And it is really just how we're meeting this periodic review cycle's allocation of growth. So it will be updated at the next periodic cycle.
Are we committed to the Industrial Growth Center?
Yes.
Okay.
The preferred alternative does move forward, the Industrial Growth Center. It will probably have a different name, but that is the terminology in the countywide planning policies. But we will probably refer to it as something different, just to customize it to what we're looking for that center to do. We did not move forward with the 90th and Willow's Local Center Concept.
Thanks, Becky. Yeah, I had a lot of questions about this, but like, it's obviously in the details, I'm guessing, that that's where the meat is. But a couple of things stand out for me. So we are, as a city, looking at these four dense pockets, and then everything else will get denser, but not in the same significant way. Is that a?
I will say that the preferred alternative looks very similar to the Centers and Corridors alternative.
Okay.
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 I will say that the devil is in the details on this one, because we had to incorporate the legislative requirements for housing units at different AMIs, and the legislative requirements under 1110, which is the missing middle in ADU legislation. So the specifics are going to, we're going to have to come to you and walk you through this. We are also in the middle of updating our EIS story map, so that the public will have the interactive sliders, and all of the tools needed to really dive into what that means.
Okay.
There's a lot of detail, and we will be coming back to you with that detail. We're presenting it to council and the planning commission, so you will have a specific conversation about the preferred alternative.
There's another question, the Southeast Redmond Industrial Growth Center, and I know whatever it's going to be called. From a perspective of, we've heard public comments on the aquifer and things like that, and the overarching themes in the urban center, we've thoughtfully, we've tried to put in all the thoughts in terms of water recharge, sustainability, and everything. So would that, these umbrella policies fit into that as well, even though the land use case might be different?
Yeah, because this is a different type of center, that center will not fall under the UC policies.
Okay.
And that is something that we'll have to figure out logistically, how to place it in the chapter, but be slightly different. Because it is not a housing area, it will not have the same design standard, as the same focused areas, right? So that is a very good clarification. The UC policies will apply to downtown Marymore and Overlake, but not the Southeast Redmond Industrial Growth Center.
Okay. But when we deal with the Southeast Redmond, so would we have some kind of overarching policies for that coming up as part of this whole cycle?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll see that coming forward as a part of the land use and non-residential planning updates.
Okay.
That are happening. So I can look at your scheduling later on in your staff updates, I can see where that lands on your schedule.
That's okay. I just wanted to know that we'll be having a conversation about it.
Actually, I just looked, and yeah, you should be having a conversation about that starting in July.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah. Your land use element update is coming to you in July.
Okay. Thank you. But I know it's all in the details, so we let it go right now, so.
Okay. The intent of this policy, again, is just to say what growth is growing in which center, and then having it in one spot, right? Just making it easier for people to find. And then, we have one new policy here, related to SEPA, the State Environmental Policy Act. It's just a reference to the fact that we're going to utilize plant actions and exemptions, and the new infill exemption legislation. We're going to maximize and utilize those tools, and we just wanted to pull that in as, to be very clear from up front. And then, from a land use perspective, the first one, UC4, is just a really minor edit. It's just talking about the new centers terminology, right? Regional and countywide growth centers, I believe is the only real edit there. Oh, and we also added cultural as a reference in there, because from a regional planning policy, metropolitan centers are supposed to be cultural centers as well. So those are the two changes on this, it's really minor. Okay. UC5 is a new one. It is based on the Puget Sound Regional Council's Supporting Transit Communities research, that we are making sure that we're maximizing both use of the light rail station and the benefits to the surrounding land brought by the light rail, so that we're ensuring that transit-supported uses are allowed near the stations. And then, as per previous comment from the planning commission, we've actually added a footnote, so that links directly into the document from PSRC that explains what they are, and gives examples of the different types of transit-supported uses. So that is something that could be easily found for folks who want more information. Just jumps as a link. And then, the next one, again, is based directly off of the King County Countywide Policies, with a little bit of Redmond-specific languages based on our themes. It's just, we want to maximize opportunities for that equitable transit-oriented development, sustainable, resilient. Again, you see the Redmond 2050 themes, we're trying to pull that in here. And then, this, again, is very, very similar to the language that's actually in the countywide planning policies. It just pulls in our themes and a few other little just nuances. One of the things that we did from a nuanced perspective, is we're, changed the language here at the end, meeting the needs of current and future residents and businesses. So that was one of the areas that we just kind of nuanced the language a little bit. UC7 is an update to an old policy we have talked about, public-private partnerships. What we have added into this is co-location of facilities, and other creative cooperative tools to meet the unique needs. So we have expanded some specific listing of the different types of needs, in reflection of the fact that we acknowledge that we're underserving Overlake. And so there's some very specific needs, and the fact that we want to co-locate, we want to be creative. So this is really just kind of an update, and focusing in on the things that we have desired, and has come out of the visioning process. So, okay. And the last sentence is verbatim, I believe, so, okay. The next edit is just another, it's just really minor. We just added the reference to near-transit stops, instead of just near-transit stations, coordinating land use and infrastructure. So, very, very minor edit there as well. All right. So as we go into character and design, this one is an update to an existing policy, but it was one that staff and the community both found a little bit vague and hard to interpret. So we've just clarified it, and tried to make it shorter and easier to understand. And we've added in some comments specifically in response to planning commission feedback. So this was super simplified here. As we add, Marymore will have a super simplified bullet for Marymore. And then, within each of these sections, it expands. So the intention of here is just to provide that really high-level look, and then within each section, it'll provide the specific details. Again, one of the last edits that the planning commission asked to make, is that we're looking at a variety of urban building types and forms, adding in the block site neighborhood scale perspective, instead of just looking at buildings from a character.
Really minor here, but distinct character. I don't think you need to.
Oh, yep, thank you. Got it. All right. So UC10 is technically new, but it's not. We took some background text and created a policy with that, instead of just being in the background. And we pulled some existing, that should be UC instead of US. So this is not technically a new policy, but it is a rearrangement of an old policy and some background text into a policy format. And that's really all it is. It's just expanding it, and making it a little bit more clear of the direction that we're going. And then, we added in some things, just based on what we heard during the drafting phase. So we're looking at high-quality design with, and this was where, yes, we talked about high-quality design before, but nobody knew what that meant. So we added in the specificity, durable, sustainable materials, utilize innovative solutions. That adding in innovative solutions is something the planning commission talked about a lot during the drafting phase, right? And then, we added in that we weren't just looking for urban design, but we're looking at affordability as well. And then, we also specifically added in that it's performance and outcome-based, right? We weren't trying to be something very specific. We wanted to make sure that the outcomes that the city is looking for, and flexibility is in there. And then, we also added in that the third bullet there, opportunities for community events. That was another big thing that came out of the community visioning phase, is that in our centers, events are huge, and we need to emphasize in our policies, so that's a huge part of our centers. Any comments on this policy? Okay. Okay. There we go.
Seems so familiar. It's all coming back.
I remember all this.
I'm glad it's coming back, and it's not seeming like it's brand-new again. It has been months since we've looked at this chapter. Yeah.
No, I have to say, having voted on two things tonight, brought them to conclusion, and then revisiting something that we did a while back, that we obviously worked hard on, that we're all totally remembering, and now we get to see the outcome, I'm like, oh my God, it's all, it all makes sense!
It's coming together. And it is really confusing with Redmond 2050, there's so many different topics we're working on, and so many different pieces and parts. It is nice to see us coming to some actual check, done, and check, done, and you can actually start to build the puzzle and see the picture, yeah.
At least we don't have a docket.
Yes, and it is nice that we paused the annual docket, so we could focus on this as well.
I think the language is looking really good. Like, I can see in my mind's eye, the vision for the city here. And I remember the discussions, I remember the, what we were trying to say, and it's now shaped up really nice.
Yeah, and some of these policies, the planning commission really went at it with the wording. Yeah, some of them, not so much, but some of them, we really fine-tuned the wording, to make sure that it really expressed what we were aiming to express. Yeah. Okay. The next one, UC11, is an updated policy. There was a lot of out-of-date language in this one that we've removed. Nothing really significant in that standpoint. But we also then updated language related to just being in an urban format, and to match some of the things that we've been looking for in Redmond 2050. And the latest edit is, we added references to art. So some of the things that you will see that are added in here, is like the references to wayfinding, gathering and meeting places, inclusive and accessible public performance and art installations, and it referenced the public art. And we also added in the shade options, like shade cloth and structures. So there's really not a lot of change here, just a little bit more specificity, and a little bit of adding in the urban and the art pieces.
Quick, just comment or question on, as soon as I saw street furniture, and I'm so glad that we're going back through this, because of course, there are two of us that are new, so we're seeing it for the first time. One of the things that I notice when I'm going around to different cities, especially here on the east side, is that the street furniture will glare who's welcome and who's not. And I'm not familiar, because I'm new, so I'm not familiar with where we, what our street furniture is going to be looking like as we move forward. Is it going to glare who's welcome and who's not, as we're talking about being a welcoming city? And then, what does that look like when it comes to our street furniture?
Yeah, actually, that has come up a couple of times, even, Sherry's brought it up a number of times, the design of that seating, and yeah. So one of the things that we are doing as a part of the Equity and the Built Environment Conversation for Redmond 2050, is taking a look at those public realm features. And we're trying to incorporate the language in here, in such a way that we're emphasizing the equity and accessibility pieces. If there's anything that we need to add in here, that you would want to further emphasize that, that is fine with us. But yes, that is something that we are actively looking at, that we need, from an accessibility perspective, more seating, but we also need to make sure that it is not exclusionary Anything else? Okay. And then, the Parks Arts Culture and Conservation, these really are minor updates. UC12, there was just some really confusing language that we just clarified, and we added in bicycle. And again, we just tried to just make it easier to understand and read, and more straightforward. And again, we just tried to just make it easier to understand and read and more straightforward. There's really not a lot here. We had a lot of references to pedestrian-friendly spaces. And everywhere that we had pedestrian-friendly or pedestrian-oriented or whatever, where it made sense to actually specify pedestrian and bicycle, we did so. And this is one of those places. But yeah, other than that, there really, it was just a minor edit. UC 13 is --
Commissioner Ruiva Kamina.
Okay. Becky, when we're talking about bicycles, and I know that we've already gone through to clarify, to add bicycles in there, but as we're moving forward and we've got different-wheeled devices or different-wheeled vehicles, I don't -- my words, Commissioner Pranav, I'm right there with you, my words are kind of escaping me this evening. And I'm thinking about, okay, well, what is that word that we're looking for?
We -- yeah, the terminology has been something that's changed during the review process, yeah. I will go back to our transportation folks and ask what their current terminology they're using is. And at the -- at our next meeting, I'll see if I can update you on that. Sometimes it's non-vehicular, sometimes it's multimodal, sometimes it's, yeah, I've seen it, like, four different terms used. I'm not 100% sure.
We had to move -- had to get rid of non-motorized.
Yeah.
Because now e-bikes have motors.
Right. And in --
Right, and electric wheelchairs, right?
Yeah, it's motor, yeah.
Yeah. So I'll find out. We'll see.
Yeah, because I saw it there in UC 12 and then also UC 14.
Yeah, there are a number of places where bicycles got added, yeah. But there are other places where earlier we got rid of non-motorized. So it's -- it's been a moving target.
Yeah. And if you guys during -- yeah. If you guys during the public hearing process want to change this one to actually go whatever the new terminology is, we'll have that at your next meeting so you can figure out what that edit might want to be if you want to go that direction. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
UC 13, again, it's an update to an existing policy. This one actually, it's not a minor update. We actually shortened this one a lot. We removed a lot of out-of-date language. There's just new terminology in the field, so we wanted to make sure that we weren't using old terminology. But also, we wanted to make sure that urban options were reflected in this policy. So there's some language in here that's just related to that. Also, again, Redmond 2050 community comments in here. So we're talking about meeting the recreational, social, and cultural needs, right? So just expanding some of the things that we're looking for. We added in the language for being accessible to community members with all abilities. We're talking about places to gather, rest, eat, and engage. We expanded that section there. So we added in specifically the cultural gathering activity needs. And we -- in that second bullet point, we just added the urban options in there as well. We also added arts and structures and illustrations as well. So, okay. Not a minor edit, but it is an edit. Some of the other things, as we continued, we added some information about community gardens and food security. That was an edit that we made late last year. This was in a response to community comments. As we look at our parks, look at food options through those parks. Okay. The other, the last change that we did on this one is the co-location. We expanded this. It was just co-location with public facilities. We expanded it to co-location with schools, community centers, and public facilities and structures. So, okay. Now we move into transportation. The first one is new. However, it was based off trying to simplify a number of different policies that were related to this topic and just create one instead. And so it's technically new, but it's not a new concept in the plan. And then we were just talking about pedestrians and bicycles, talking about all ages and abilities, and meeting the needs of residents with physical and intellectual disabilities. This is specific language for this one because of some feedback that we got from our disability stakeholders, that they wanted to really call out the fact that we have a huge group of folks. And the needs of physical disabilities and the intellectual disabilities are different. We did get a comment that there was some pushback to the reference to intellectual disabilities, but the community itself was actually asking for that. So in this last edit, we acknowledged that there was a comment about that terminology, but since the community itself was asking for it, we kept it in this draft. Okay.
Becky, just a minor edit in between the words "B" and "safe," we've got another hyphen.
Oh, thank you. I don't know why those are showing up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So UC 15 is just a tiny minor edit. We just simplified the language. Obviously, we're going to be providing a full range of transit services. The edit here really, the last edit we made to this one is, instead of "to" the centers, it was "to" and "within" the centers. That was the last edit that was made to this one. So, okay. The other edit to this, I believe, is we added the reference to shelters. So it was public transit stations and other amenities. We put stations, shelters, and other amenities. So, that was something that we had a lot of feedback from the general community and our disability stakeholders. The lack of shelters at our bus stations was, it's an issue for some of our community members. So, UC 16 is an update, and you'll see that there is one last update that we did. We are implementing the transit-oriented development definitions from the region, right? So the region has adopted a definition as a 10-minute walk, and even more specific, at three miles per hour. So that is the regional definition. We do acknowledge that our community, especially our disabled community, has said that is totally different in every way, and we do acknowledge that. But when we actually set a boundary at some point, we were using the regional rather than trying to come up with our own. But we do know that the needs of our community and how we plan for them and how we look at our public realm updates aren't necessarily going to necessarily stick to just those TOD boundaries. So we're going to be looking at citywide updates as well, right? But from, for the sake of just being consistent with the definitions of region. Okay. The other thing we did here, and the reason why there is an edit from version two to version three, is we realized, as we're going through all of the code pieces, one of the very, very important things, that's a fundamental rule of all zoning code, is each piece of code has to have a planned document policy in there that is the foundation for that code. And we are adopting transit-oriented development-focused areas. And yes, this document is full of conversations about TOD, but there wasn't anything specific to the TOD focus areas. So we added that very specifically just to beef up the foundation for the code update.
Becky, if the definition of TOD is a 10-minute walk at three miles an hour, why not put 10-minute walk at three miles an hour?
Okay. Oh, by the way, through the establishment of the TOD focus areas, as you see the packet coming forward, in order to set the stage for those TOD focus areas to not just be in Overlake, we're creating a new section of code. So that as we look at downtown in Marymore or along our B-line or whatever, if the city wants to do transit-oriented development, not just around our light rail stations, right? We're creating a new section of code for these special areas. So it will be outside of the 2112 Overlake package, but there's so many other pieces that are not in 2112, too. So, but that, I did actually reference, we're proposing a new code section. It will be 2105 unless something changes. So, okay. And now we move to Overlake. I do want to point out that this is 16 policies. This is significantly less than what we have today. All right, we, this new chapter will be less than half the policies than the current one. So streamlined it quite a bit. The existing framework policy for Overlake is, we didn't make any real changes here. The first one is as it is. It's definitely talking about high technology and other employment, vibrant urban setting, you know, all the different types of uses, looking at live, work, et cetera, with walk, bike, and transit. So, okay. What we did do is we updated the second Overlake framework policy. There, one of the goals of Redmond 2050 is if there was any problematic language that could be interpreted in a way that could result in actions that were exclusionary, we wanted to remove those pieces and parts from both policy and code. So some of the edits to this framework policy were in that mind. So what I will do in your next packet, for those of you who are just wanting to go back, I will actually include the existing chapter, just to make it easy for you to go back and forth. But you can actually take a look at where that might have occurred. But, oopsie, looks like there's a typo in there, too. To both Redmond and Bellevue, period, help. I'll figure out what the typo in there is. In OV1, we updated the center language. We are, Overlake has now been re-designated at a regional level from an urban center to a metro center. That is a done deal. It's a part of the regional planning process. So we've updated it, the reference to metro center throughout. And then we just made sure that we are adding language about services, amenities, and infrastructure. So, and that was in response to your last Planning Commission comments. Okay? All the centers have always been intended to be job and housing, both, a mixture. So, as we go into southeast Redmond, that's where the change is going to be, where it's just going to be jobs. So, okay. OV2, we just had some minor edits in here, and it really was just because it was confusing to read through. So we really just tried to simplify this policy and added some flexibility. And then the last edit we made was this last sentence, right? So the first sentence was really, you know, add clarity edit. And then the last edit we made was just talking about exceptions, right? We want to make sure that we do not have only housing in Overlake. We want to make sure that it's mixed-use building or mixed-use sites, not standalone. We had a lot of conversation at Planning Commission about that, right? This is a change, right? So right now, in Overlake, especially Overlake Village, you can allow you to do a bunch of different things, but we're just getting housing, 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 housing. And we're losing opportunity for businesses in that area. And so one of the directions that we're doing with Overlake, and especially Overlake Village, is do not have just housing. We need spaces for services. We need spaces for our nonprofits and daycares and, you know, the grocery stores and all of those things. They have to have a place. And so this was really a conversation about that, but it came up that we needed an exception to be built into that. And so the last edit we made was just that nuancing of that, what that exception language would be, so that staff has some clarity on where they could make that flexibility. And so we're just making sure that the intention there is clear. So, okay. The next couple are new, but they are not really new. It's another case where we took a whole bunch of different policies and just made them one instead of keeping several. And so we combined a couple and simplified it down into this one, just supporting economic development. We did have a lot of conversation at the Planning Commission about the difference between retaining and promoting new. And so we did nuance some of the language in here. And then the old policies were really talking about compatibility. And so we kept that compatibility conversation, but we specifically added in the fact that the retaining of businesses is just as important as drawing in new, because the old policy was really focused on new. The next policy, again, it is new, but it is in conjunction with a lot of our focus area for Redmond 2050 about equity and anti-displacement in particular. And it also is acknowledging the fact that Overlake is a very uniquely mixed ethnicity zone, and that the support for those small and locally-owned businesses, in particular those ethnic businesses, require flexibility in order to keep them there. So this policy was specifically developed for that, that we need flexible standards of spaces, including sizing of spaces, that we acknowledge how we need to redevelop that area, can't be all at once, because then we, the rehoming of businesses, looking at anti-displacement incentives. Again, this is a foundation piece for the work that we're doing at code. We need to mention the fact that we need anti-displacement incentives. And looking at incremental policies and change over time, that innovative was one of the last edits that was made, looking at innovative measures. So, I just also want to point out that this is heavily driven by city conversations and city goals and priorities, but it does meet a lot of our regional planning requirements. So it checks the box from a regional certification standpoint as well. Okay. Right. And at the beginning of this conversation, I mentioned that we were removing number-specific policies out of their individual chapters and just moved it up into the centers. This is the edit that we were making to that. However, we did want to keep in Overlake the reference to the fact that we're talking about the Overlake Metro Center through year 2050, and specifically talking about the SEPA Plan Action Ordinance, because we need a policy that is the basis for the SEPA Plan Action Ordinance. So this is an edit to an existing one, but it doesn't really change any of the content of what we're trying to do. Okay. All right. OV6 is no change. We're going to continue to work with Bellevue, and we work really closely with them. We meet with them regularly. So, okay. OV7 is a very minor edit. We removed subareas in this plan. For those of you who might not be familiar, technically, Overlake is a subarea of the city. So then having subareas of the subarea was starting to get a little confusing. As we look at other areas of the city, we're looking at trying to get rid of that references to, and also just trying to streamline it, because if we have different policies for each individual subarea, we were getting really duplicative policies. So one of the ways that we were able to shrink this down is we removed the subareas, and we just said, here's a policy that makes sense, and it applies to everywhere. Or if it didn't apply somewhere specific, then we kept a reference specifically to that.
Commissioner.
It's a very sidebar question, but is it very cathartic to do so?
Yeah. Yes. Having a much smaller document at the end is going to be so much easier for everybody, and it's a relief, yeah. From the community standpoint as well, because you can, I mean, reading through a four- or five-page, through binder is going to be crazy, right? But if you can get it down to something much smaller, it's easier for everybody to follow and understand how it's implemented. Yeah, so, um, so --
Commissioner Ruiva Kamina.
Go ahead.
Becky, on OV7, we've got another reference to a 10-minute walk. Would it be appropriate to add, as Chair Nichols had mentioned earlier, at a three-mile-an-hour pace?
You know, actually, why don't, because we just added the TOD.
Yeah.
Let's just use the TOD focus area language instead.
Okay.
Okay, let me do that.
Now that we have that defined, use the defined, use the term that we defined.
Yeah. Perfect. Okay. Okay. So OV8 is new, and actually, I'm, we might, I need to talk to Ian if we need to edit that percentage number. But this is to say, all of the conversations we had about the incentive program updates, again, we're just trying to make sure that there's a policy that underlines what we're going to be doing at code from the incentive package standpoint. We want affordable housing. We want to incentivize the TOD focus areas. We want to support equitable transit-oriented development, specifically for all household types, sizes, family-oriented units, remember? Were a huge thing. family-oriented units, remember, were a huge thing, and as identified as a need for Overlake. And then housing for all ages and abilities, and then anti-displacement. So this is a good foundation for a lot of the work that we're doing in the incentive program. OV9 is new as well. Again, it's about our focus on community members with disabilities in this Redmond 2050 update, and just making sure that our community is designing for and meeting the needs of all ages and abilities, and specifically for Overlake. Because there's a specific need for Overlake, based off of the employment, for the Supportive Employment Program at Microsoft, we needed to very specifically talk about the needs for that group in here. So this is a policy that folds in our equity inclusion and Overlake-specific housing needs. So community members with disabilities, supportive services, incentivizing these affordable, accessible units. Community members often said, yes, there are accessible units, but they're not affordable, or they're affordable and they're not accessible. It needs to be some kind of parity in there that combines that all. And then we have in there, just seeking out innovative methods and partnerships to increase universally-designed housing units, so. So it's a new policy, but it really emphasizes the direction that we're trying to focus on in Redmond 2050. Couple of minor edits in here. This one, we are very excited to say we're getting rid of the term "single-family residential" and "single-family neighborhoods." Luckily, now that we've got a little bit further in the process, we know what we're going to do, we have a preferred alternative, we have a design for our zoning changes that we're doing, we can get rid of that term, right? So we are going to be having neighborhood residential zoning districts, and we can use that terminology. So that was something the Planning Commission talked about a lot.
Yes, we did.
Excited to see that finally come to fruition. So OV11 really is, again, it's an update. It really tried to take something that had a lot in it and just tried to simplify it down. We have folded in the themes of sustainability and resiliency, and just really wanted to fold in a lot of comments from the Planning Commission. Obviously, we're also updating it, the metro center reference. So one of the changes that we made in here is the Planning Commission asked that we actually do site and building designs contribute to the creation of urban spaces. We added in that pedestrian-bicycle conversation, all ages and abilities. The last edit the Planning Commission added us to make was and-associated landscaping, I believe, Commissioner Parna, that was your edit. We also specifically had a really big conversation at one of our meetings about innovative methods and partnerships, right? I believe, where Captain was like, we need to get that innovative language in there, right? And then Commissioner Parna, you had actually said, let's talk about raising, because at one point, we had this very specifically calling out a number of different methods, and Commissioner Parna said, let's raise it up, because the methods are going to change over time, let's just talk about the fact that it's renewable energy generation, passive, and then looking at that at a really high level, and then renewable energy. And then one of the last edits that we were asked by the Planning Commission is to talk with our TIS department about just advancing technology and how we can edit some of the policies to reference that. And so we added that and advanced technology into this policy. I think there was one other policy, we also added some language about technology. So this is definitely different than what you'll see today. There's fewer bullet points, and it talks very specifically to a lot of the conversations that we've been having specifically. All right, and then OV12, the only edit that you'll see here is we adopted, after our last conversation, we changed it from international district to intercultural district, that was a really good conversation, thank you for that direction. The other change that we're doing is we're removing the map from the plan. We are, that new section that I, we're creating for TOD-focused areas, we're creating for special districts. So we're going to move this as a special district, and then if we decide as a city that we want other cultural districts established somewhere else, that allows us some more flexibility, and it's not in the plan and require a plan amendment if we want to change the boundaries for some reason, right? So we're referencing the creation of this district and the intent of the district, but we're moving the map of it out of the plan itself. So, okay. All right. And then, again, the reason why we're creating this district is multiple reasons. We needed to support the existing businesses that are getting displaced, and we wanted to focus on the fact that that's part of the character of the area, that's really important today, and supporting it as a part of a continuation of the character of that area in the future is really important, as a way to distinguish it from other areas of the city. And then how can we capitalize on that? How can we enhance that? How can we make it obvious as you drive into that area that that is what that area is? And so, looking to pull that out and to become a visible part of the community and more directly. Okay. And then OV13 is the old, OV20, except for it's now referencing a metro center. There's, it's really that simple, although I believe that we also put recognize urban park and recreation needs is a change. I think that was one of your changes again, Commissioner Parna. It was like something, it was something strange at the very beginning, and we were just like, recognize it, right? But this is essentially that policy with, like, I think two words were changed. Okay. OV14, again, you'll see innovative, that was another thing that Planning Commission really wanted to talk about, seeking opportunities for those innovative partnerships, accessible, publicly accessible spaces, that we're looking at amenity spaces in and between buildings or on podium tops, roof, you know, looking at those outdoor balcony spaces, rooftop amenity spaces. So it is new, it incorporates a couple of the directions that we're looking at from a parks standpoint, that we're looking at from an urban standpoint, and then just kind of rolls it all together. 15 is also new. Again, we're looking at publicly accessible spaces. The Planning Commission's last edits were really to focus on indoor and outdoor, because it was looking at specifically just spaces, and then the Planning Commission asked us to be very clear that we're looking for both indoor and outdoor, and that it's for gathering and recreation spaces, especially for events. So this is a new policy, but it does reflect some very specific needs from the community and the direction from the Planning Commission. OV16 is just a minor edit. I believe we added, Commissioner Parna, your digital art and spaces for performing art.
Yes, didn't he?
Oh, we also added permanent and transitory art installations. So, so those are the two edits there, recommended by Commissioner Parna.
Commissioner Sheffron.
Oh, Commissioner Sheffron, you as well?
That was her.
Your memory's not as clear.
Is it both? Good. Yeah. Oh, great. We tried to pull that into wherever we were talking about arts, trying to recognize that, so. Okay. So multimodal transportation, looking at increasing mobility in Overlake, this was just pedestrian and bicycle. And then to and from Overlake, other than that, we're just referencing the transportation element and the Transportation Master Plan. So a couple of minor tweaks and a cross-reference. We, in 18, we added equity inclusion, and we added non-automotive methods of transportation, wheelchairs, scooters, et cetera, and all ages and abilities, so. Yeah, it's just an update, but hopefully it's one that incorporates some of the themes that we've been getting out of Redmond 2050. OV19 is really just talking about right-of-way. We added for uses within the right-of-way, including bike streets, you know, this is actually something that was recommended from our staff, that this is an issue that's come up, especially even during the pandemic, the streeterries and conversations about there's competing uses for those spaces, and we just need a policy that talks about the fact that there are competing needs, and that we have to develop a plan for managing and how do we prioritize, et cetera. So this is really setting the stage for some continuing discussions that will happen in the city. And then OV20 is an existing policy. All right, so capital facilities, public facilities and public services. It is just bringing this up to date, there's some language in there that is just out of date, we wanted to make sure, again, we were using appropriate and up-to-date languages. There are, we did add in here colocation and shared parking, I believe that was from a couple of Planning Commission meetings ago, that we just wanted to make sure, so that is, those bullet points are new. Yeah. We also talked about vertical and horizontal integration opportunities. So what we had said is consider opportunities, gara-gara, just making sure that it's not just out, it's up, trying to find different ways of co-locating and being creative about partnerships and other opportunities. We specifically talked about our fire station and police station and community centers, right? So we had a lot of conversations about colocation and the benefits of colocation, but that it doesn't necessarily have to be side-by-side, it could be vertically. And then I believe we also added in that time-space specificity, because, again, the Planning Commission brought up the fact that a building could be in use and not in use, but if you partnership, you could maybe use, have it in use more often, so. It's definitely a lot of edits to this one, but I believe we've got it down to where we've matching what the Planning Commission and the community was looking for. So the other thing I do want to point out is, the old version of this policy did not talk about the public services, the community centers, the schools, it really was focused on city colocation, and we broadened this out, so. All right. OV22, literally, a very, very tiny edit. We're talking about regional stormwater facilities, connecting regional stormwater facilities. It's, I can't even remember honestly what the word change was in there, but I bet it was probably just one word. It was a very minor edit. In OV23, this is a new one, but it is another case where it's new, but it was a consolidation of a lot of different existing ones. The, the listing of, you know, bodies of water here are, in an existing policy, we just added Tosh Creek, to be very specific for Overlake. And then we added, wherever possible, provide natural or landscape buffers. And this was in direct response to, oh, you know what? There's another reference, single-family, I need to edit. Oh, no. We're going to get rid of single-family, yeah. Yeah, so I'll edit that as well. This is in response to some work that our Public Department is looking at doing to enhance the usability of Tosh Creek and efficacy of Tosh Creek, so.
I think just a Ctrl+F wouldn't give you anything with single-family together, you can just kind of delete it. Almost.
Yeah, I thought I had caught everything where we had done, I missed this one, though, we're good. All right, so the neighborhood residential area is down to one policy. This was not our original intention, but over the course of discussion of months and months, as we looked at each individual policy, we said, we don't need that anymore, we don't need that anymore, we don't need that anymore, or that should be a citywide policy. So we just literally, through the course of discussion, that we really just only need one. So we're down to just this one, and the promoting a variety in the type and price of new infill residential developments. Again, it's just looking at ages, size, incomes. This is just an update to an existing policy and adding that cross-reference to the housing element. So, everything that was a reference to multifamily has to look like single-family, or limiting multifamily in specific areas, all of those things that were exclusionary were all removed. Everything that should have been a citywide policy, removed. So we had some design basics, literally design basics, that were in here in Overlake that didn't need to be here, so.
So I have a question. Why isn't this one a citywide policy?
It could be, if you wanted to remove this one, too, we could, it is, very easily could be a citywide policy as well.
Why wouldn't it be?
Yeah.
I completely think she's, she's absolutely spot on, it's what we would see from every, everywhere, pretty much.
It is what we would see everywhere, yeah.
Get rid of them all.
Okay. All right. And then the last policy is actually not in this element, but if you scroll down to the very last page, we have an element in, that are, we have a policy in our land use element that needs to be updated because of the new centers language, the new transit-oriented development focusing language, the new zoning districts, and the zoning district consolidation. So this is not something that is, like, creating something new, but it's trying to make the land use element match what we're doing over the centers element. Right? So these edits here are just a strict edit. However, keep in mind, the land use element is being updated in Redmond 2050 Phase 2, there might be other edits to LU52 during that process, and so this is just a temporary way of making sure that, that we're just consistent until we get to the land use element update. And LU52 may not be 52 anymore, right? Because we're consolidating and trying to simplify that as well. So just keep that in mind. The biggest change here is really, we have that new urban, Overlake Urban Multifamily Zoning District. Again, it's going to be a code change, it needed a policy as a foundation, it's the reason why we're editing this in Phase 1, is because we couldn't do that new zoning district right now if we didn't do the policy to support it. Okay, that's the only reason why we're touching this policy before the land use element gets updated.
Typos in there?
Right, that is it.
Did you see the typo? Did you see the typos? There's two of them, zoning?
No, that's a strike.
If you see a typo, just shoot me an email, would you? Or let me know. Is it a strike through?
I see. It used to be zone, and we made it zoning.
Yes, yeah.
Looks like a typo, but it's a strike through.
Got it.
Yeah.
Wow, Becky, that's impressive.
Super cool.
So we've been working on this, this one for two years, so it's great.
I remember. So what about the fourth time I've done Overlake policies?
So your next meeting, your public hearing for this element is occurring. We will only be doing the policies, we will start to introduce the code package. The code package isn't just Overlake, remember, we combined it with the zoning code rewrite 2? So the package, the last time I counted, without everything in it, was over 300 pages. So again, we're going to provide it to you in chunks, we're going to provide it early, we're going to have this focus on this, here's a guide on how to read it. And in this version, I'm excluding 140 pages of strike-throughs, so you could just focus mostly on the new stuff, because again, we're striking 2112 and replacing it, right? So that's 140 pages of strike-through, just right there. So we're going to try to, again, get you as much early notice, and what I might do is, some of the zoning code rewrite things might be ready before some of the others, so I might just ship you out early notices, as soon as Kim posts them, I'll give you the links.
Great.
Right, so that you can have as much time in advance to get through and review that. But we are aiming, we're aiming for an August public hearing for that. We just, yesterday, got the consultant report on the incentive program, so I don't know if that might change, or if we'll just start the public hearing and we'll continue the public hearing.
Right.
Okay.
I'd like to know more about what the consultants found, because we had a lot of developers come and talk about what that meant, and so.
Yeah, at a really high level, we'll come back and we'll go through it in depth, but at a really high level, they just acknowledged that steel construction is not going to happen right now, right? The super high towers, no matter what we do from an incentive No matter what we do from an incentive perspective, the cost of steel has gone up by, they said it quadrupled in the last couple of years, and it hasn't come back down. And then, the vacancy rate is around 25% for office, and so, just because of the way things are in life today, we're not going to get those towers right now, no matter what we do. So, they had some very specific recommendations, how we might retool the structuring of the incentive program so that people can kind of walk their way into it incrementally. So, we're going to look at how we can implement some of the recommendations on that. They did have some really exciting news that mass timber is something that we could get there on. And they also were able to confirm that the base that we're starting with in our new proposed draft was, we are in a good place as a starting point, right? So, we made a lot of changes there. Keep in mind that what they did is, they took a snapshot of what the draft was at that time and did the analysis based on a number of different assumptions. So, nothing that they gave us is going to be something that we just plug into our system. It is something that, there's a whole bunch of information that they give us about specific things that are achievable and specific costs, and then, we have to go in now and then fold in the city priorities piece of it. And then, so, we have some work to do to take the information they're providing us and then revise the incentive program and, and present you out with something. And we're going to do our best to do that as quickly as possible, but that might be a reason why we might want to hold the public hearing over an extended period of time. Get it started, get through some of this stuff, and then just keep going. But yeah, the policies, let's get that out of the way. Let's get through the public hearing process for this. Again, it's going to shrink that section by more than half. It's going to be a lot easier, more straightforward, and up-to-date. And then, we can actually really focus in on a lot of the nitty-gritty in, in the code. But the code is looking pretty exciting from the standpoint of, we have gotten a lot of our concerns that the community brought up, of testing comments that we did. We've been able to work out some of those things, like the issues with the first floor ceiling height. We've talked through that, and we've come up with a good possibility of moving forward on that, and some of the other things we've been working through. So, there's, it's under review right now with our department director. As soon as I get feedback from her as, "Yes, go ahead and publish this version," it will go. Our technical advisor committee is going to be looking at it this Friday, again, just wrapping everything up. It is a couple weeks late. We were hoping to get it out at the beginning of this month, but because there's just so much, and there's just so much, there's only so much staff, right? So, it's coming, and it's, it looks like, at least from what we've been able to, that we've been able to address all of the things that we've been getting, or have a reason why we didn't go in the direction that somebody requested. But it looks, it's looking pretty solid, so...
Okay. Thanks. And we'll move on. Our Redmond 2050 monthly update is just a written briefing, because we had such a heavy agenda, so, but be sure and look at it. It's a lot of interesting, useful stuff in there. Staff and Commissioner updates. Becky, did Glenn update you?
As I mentioned, you're going to have a public hearing at your next meeting. Also, we're going to be bringing forward some of the Overlake regulations, the land use, residential and non-residential conversations are moving forward, and you'll have a study session on the housing element updates as well. If you haven't been following along with what Ian's been doing from a housing perspective, we just went through council on some of those updates, and hopefully be able to provide some updates on that, too. But there's a lot of work that's been happening on, like, the MFTE program updates and all of those things, so that's going to be exciting. We're going to start that process. This Overlake regulations and the housing regulations, because they cross into the same chapters, we're going to go to public hearing on the same schedule, right? Because we need them to adopt the same night. But that's going to make some really long meetings, and this next meeting, I just wanted to heads up, this next meeting is one of them, because we have, Overlake regulations, land use and housing are all big, plus the public hearing on centers. So, please know, we try to avoid this whenever we can, but this is going to be a late night. It's going to go past 10, I'm sure.
Okay.
And I know we try not to do that in your regulations. We have to ask permission for that.
Just, it's the July 15th meeting?
July 12th. Yeah. And we, we can definitely take breaks in that, and we can do whatever we can to keep that going forward. Hopefully, we won't need the full 45 minutes that we've allocated to the public hearing on centers. We've gotten a lot of really positive feedback from the community, so maybe that will go shorter, and we can, that meeting will then proceed a little bit faster. But just wanted to make sure that you knew in advance, be prepared for that going to be a little bit of a longer evening. I'm going to see if there's a way that we can bring you snacks or drinks or something too, to make it through. Again, we try not to do this, but there's, sometimes we just can't avoid it. And then, all of those conversations continue through all of July. July is going to be about Overlake land use housing, and it's just really going to be boom-a-boom, because in August, we go to public hearing on those topics. So, Overlake regulations, housing regulations are going to public hearing, and then we start looking at Marymore and Southeast Redmond and whatnot in August as well, so...
Great.
The, in your monthly update, it also talks about some events that we have scheduled, community events. The complete community conversation is continuing. We are currently in the process of working with Eastside Forall to schedule a couple of other events that will be language-supported events. So, we've got our community-based organization support system in play. So, there are going to be a number of other things that are going to pop up on the calendar. So, what is in your memo is incomplete, but as soon as we have specific dates and times and the actual language is supported at each of those events finalized, we'll be advertising and sharing with those as well. But if you can please continue to support everybody, we do have those elements on Let's Connect, and all of our boards that are in the lobby are going to stay there for a little while, so anybody who's visiting City Hall can come in and provide some feedback on those pieces as well. We've actually gotten a lot of great feedback from the work that we've been doing on complete communities. It's been really exciting to see, as one of our speakers said, that people are coming to those meetings with excitement instead of being scared by the, the changes that we're talking about, potentially looking at. So, I just wanted to share that with the Planning Commissioners as well. Also, we are going to be doing some pretty significant updates to our website, so as soon as we roll out some of those changes, we'll let you know as well. We are nearing a point where almost every single piece of Phase Two will be out there as the start. So, there's a couple of things that you're going to start coming see, like the Marymore and Southeast Redmond, and then our design chapter, where we talked about community design, and we're pulling in those pieces. You're going to start seeing those in August. When those come forward, that's basically the last of it. So, everything related to Redmond 2050 will be out there in some way, shape, or form by the end of August. And then, we're going to start seeing, like, done, 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 done. So, we've actually really, we've reached a pretty critical time point in this process, so thank you for hanging in there with us.
We're starting to send the first pieces to council now with the stuff we passed tonight.
Yeah. So, that is it for staff updates, if there's anything.
Any Commissioner updates? Commissioner Roy, if you can come in.
Recently, our AMI, updated AMI numbers were released, just so that we are aware, AMI area median income, and we are now sitting at 146. So, when we're thinking about, like, what is 60%, what's 80%, that number is going to be based off of currently 1,46,000.
146 per family of four, family of two. The AMI is always a...
They have to...
Absolutely, right?
Yeah, I think so.
So, it's a family of four, 146?
Family of two.
Two.
Okay. Anything else? Then I look for a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned.